Hold a discussion on any act on this agenda, only on this agenda. And some commissioners meeting?
There's two. There's a special meeting and then there's the regular one, so there's two signatures. Sit over here. It's easy.
Okay, so next thing, the Sandridge protest tax for 2021. Jeffries are gonna give a little presentation for it.
The only reason I put this together is so that we can all be on the same page with some of the facts involving this case. There you go. You have an extra.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There's been some discussion about this, starting all the way back into October when we first got the court settlement. The first section that I've given you is a copy of that section settlement. You can see that what, who they were actually suing was the Treasurer, the Board of Taxural Correction, and myself listed first. The Taxural Correction Board at that time was Michael, myself, and Kyle Campbell. Lenita serves as the Secretary on that board, so she would have gotten a copy of this in October, and Valerie would have gotten a copy of this in October also. The first page, if you'll notice, three lines up from the bottom, it says this decision is styled, the Court of Civil Appeals, and the decision styled BCE Mock versus Roach. That BCE Mock decision is what's driving the Sandridge decision, okay? So that's where the saltwater disposal well decision came in. I know that the main problem with the Sandridge 2021 taxes has been that they didn't file a 990 forms, and that has created an issue for the schools. We have been advised by our attorney that regardless of them not filing their paperwork, and this is also the same year that they did not file the protest through the proper channels and tried to run through the Taxural Correction meeting, regardless of them not filing the paperwork, that's why the BCE Mock case is carrying over into this one. That's why the courts ruled, is because this Courts of Civil Appeals ruled in the BCE Mock, and it's carrying over. So this is, regardless of whether they filed any paperwork, that was never going to be a legal argument in the courts, unfortunately. However, it did create a problem. I will mention the 990 forms. Everyone in this room, I think, understands that without that form, the Treasurer's Office is not authorized to keep those funds. So without that form for 2021, the Treasurer's Office is not authorized to keep the 2021 tax collections in escrow. They had to apportion them out to the schools. I have actually gotten some emails from Lauren Van Kuren, which makes me speculate that because she could not produce the 990 forms quickly for 2021, but she did for 2020, they were not filed. So I really truly believe that they were not filed. We've since gotten an email from Will. I think Lenita got a copy of that email. There's no way to know when they backdated those. So, but Lauren wasn't able to find them on the file, so I do believe that they were not filed. The court signed this journal entry on October 28th. At that time, I was unaware that the 990 forms were not filed. However, the Taxural Corrections went through on November 8th. That was the first Taxural Correction Board. You can see the Taxural Corrections. And then Valerie was able to process those and sign them on November 18th. November 18th is the day in which I learned that there was no 990 forms. If you go into the Communication section, which is the second section, there is our bill from Chesapeake O'Hara. They keep track of conversations that we have. And you can see also, on November 18th, I did call our attorney once I found out that there was no 990 forms, because the issue was getting the money back and following the court order. So that discussion was held on November 18th. I had a follow-up conversation with our attorney on November 21st. Garrett, I'm on the attorney if you want.
Yeah.
I'm gonna skip ahead. I just didn't want you to be lost, sorry.
There you go.
Okay, so those conversations were had with the attorney. I talked to, those conversations entailed talking to Luke Adams about what do we do going forward? Luke is the one that told me that they do not handle any kind of litigation after the judgment is made. So if we needed any kind of legal advice, then I should call Chris Boring. I did call Chris Boring. Chris Boring spoke to me between the 11:21 and 12:01. He spoke to me twice. He called Nancy Grantham, and Nancy Grantham called me, just because she wanted to go straight to the source and find out exactly what was going on. So between November 21st and December 12th, I had two conversations with Chris Boring and one conversation with Nancy Grantham. Some of the things that they told me was you could not take things from one tax year without a signed judgment agreeing to that. And so I assumed that there again, where the 990 forms were required before you could just withhold money from and put it into escrow, that that would also apply to the 2020 year. So that's when I started asking more questions. Chris Boring requested on December 12th that I put everything into one email, and he would respond to me. I sent that email to Chris Boring, Lenita, the Treasurer's Office, and all three District Bars. I also forwarded that email to Michael, and I spoke to Jay and Marvin at the time. I think Nate, you were kind of coming up for some commissioner meetings. I think we kind of were talking about a little bit, but we didn't get into it. I didn't get to talk to Garrett until he came in to talk about some other business in my office, and I forwarded that email to you on December 30th, is when you finally got caught up with that, because I think you were kind of kept out of the loop with Jay. So that's that. Lenita did tell me that she did not get the attachments, so I printed those and gave those to her. The attachment was this brown sheet. I handed out to everyone in print and I emailed it. I've reworked that, so it's gonna show up later. I've got that copy, but you guys don't, because it's kind of been reworked. So that's the email saying, hey, we have a problem. The next page over is Chris Boring's response to me again on December 12th, one and a half hours later. The reason he was able to respond so quickly to my email is because he had already talked to Nancy Grantham. And his response was look into the E and O insurance, which I did. I called Dale Freck, and then he put me in touch with another person at ACCO, and they said, no, the insurance would not cover that. The point is that we had a problem, and the first solution was not just pass the buck down to the schools and do our part. I have been racking my brain and losing sleep to try to figure out a way that we can serve our communities and serve our schools by figuring out a way that we can put this off at least one year, so that they can budget for it. So the DA also told me on the phone, but he did not put this in writing, that he told me that there is no mechanism by which you can reduce one year's tax apportionment to repay a tax burden from a prior year without an agreed judgment. So that's what we were told by the DA. I never talked to Buddy Carroll, and I never talked to the other Treasurers. That was what Valerie was doing, to try to also look at the best solution going forward.
Can I interrupt for just a second? I mean, nothing drastic. I just wanted to say, the reason that we went ahead and withheld that money at the end of December was that is our largest
Right.
collection.
So they weren't afraid if they didn't?
If we didn't do that, and we in turn had to get money, you know, we would be in dire straits.
But we're not in a bad place, because we haven't repaid it back to Sandridge. So the money is still in the courthouse, so we still have some options. There was some talks with the superintendents. I think I talked to Bryce, and Garrett mentions that he talked to Mr. Rousey. And Nate, I think you talked to Kale Pierce. So I think we're starting to look for superintendents in. There's a little bit of miscommunication on the exact numbers, so I think it'd be wise for a checks and balance for somebody to check my numbers. So that gets us into tax statements. The tax statements, I just printed off of the Treasurer's website. You guys can look at those. Those do match up with the balances that I calculated for the values. So those tax statements are all there. They show the payment dates of January 1 and March 17th. If that's incorrect, then Valerie can correct those. But I just printed those off her website, so that you can see those values do match up with the values that I've got on the spreadsheet. This spreadsheet I did rework for you guys to include both 2020 and 2021. I've got the mil levies in, I've got the assessed value, and I've got the tax value. And then I've got it spread out, but honestly, Valerie's probably more equipped to know exactly how that spreads out by mil levy, but I think Lenita could do that too. Nate, I understand you're a math guy. So I think as checks and balances, any of us could check my numbers. But before we start handing money back to Sandridge, I think these numbers definitely need to be checked, okay? I've also given you a copy of the mil levies, so if anybody wants to check it that way. Lastly, going forward. Sandridge is still a partner in Alphatac County. They are still a taxpayer. For 2022, the tax roll for Sandridge alone, whether it be Sandridge Exploration or Sandridge Ministry, through some personal property and some real estate, their total bill was $76,000. They are still a taxpayer, and we want to be able to work with them and have good communication. Every year I talk to the tax representatives, I need to still be able to have a good communication there. Going forward, I've been trying to think of different ways that we could help our schools, that we can be a partner in this burden with them, whether it's just simply being able to work out a plan in which they can repay it next year rather than this year, because they had no notice this year. It hit in October, payments started coming in in December. They just had no notice. And so one thought that I had, and I even talked to, I don't know if Valerie was there that day, but I talked to Lenita and Donna, that one idea is can we, can we ask the DA if we can take that money out of the escrow account? And we were told no, but at least it was an idea. I'm trying to think outside the box. What I think we're left with, unfortunately, is working on payment schedule. I sent an email to Will Presson. I just said basically, would you be open to a discussion? And he said, yes, of course he'd always be open to a discussion. So that's the history of how it started, where things kind of skipped a beat, and where I think we are going forward. And I do think that the math calculations should be checked by, or they just don't take my word for them. So that's that spreadsheet. If you guys have any questions about any of the conversations I've had, or...
I do have one question. Do you think, Ms. that was not held in escrow, that they're gonna require interest on that? And who's gonna have to fund the interest?
The journal, the order says
We've had the money for
Well, we didn't have the money. We dispersed it. Says it shall, the judgment and to issue refund of taxes paid under protest by Sandridge for 2021 year, together with all accrued interest. Was it paid under, was it paid under protest? Technically, I think not. Can we fight that legally? That would be a legal battle that I think we would lose. It would probably postpone the required payment. But so far as the interest, I think we're gonna have to have a judge
Rule on it.
Rule, whether or not we owe them any interest.
Well, we never collected no interest, so I won't see why we'd have to pay the interest back, but yet we've held on to the money for it.
Well, but we haven't
No, we haven't. We dispersed that money.
Yes, well, still, but the money was sent here to us. They were out of pocket.
They were
Yes, it was out of there, yes.
So
But it was then
I do not know if we'll be liable for any interest or not.
There's a good chance we will be.
It's possible.
But there again, when are they gonna be held responsible for what they didn't do?
You'll have to ask the judge that.
I mean, they are really the culprit. They're the people that caused the problem. It wasn't us.
That is a good question, and I do not know the answer to that. I think it's gonna take a judge dis, I don't know. Maybe that's in the discussion when we talk about the repayment plan, getting Sandridge to understand that they neglected to file the 990s, so that there will be no interest on this.
Any thoughts?
I know with the letter from Burlington School, they want an answer in writing, so I recommend that we all do it in writing. I let every party be
Lenita gave me a copy of that. I do not
I gave it to you. I gave it to you, and yours was in your blue folder, but I can make another copy of this.
I didn't have it with me, but
I didn't present that, because that, I felt like, was already in Lenita's ball court, so I felt like so. But I don't see any way you can stretch that five years. Maybe two. I mean
Two would be
Two would be nice.
Have any of their schools anything you're just
That's the only letter we've received was
How many people
Well, I might just summarize kind of what
What superintendents have actually been talked to?
All of them.
Medford?
No, one.
Ally?
All of them.
Alba? Votex?
That's all they've been talking about.
I mean
No!
EMS?
That's our
Has EMS been talked to?
No.
EMS?
That's where I was going with this. Because there's three main schools that were being affected the most. Last, well, I sent a list of questions to the District Attorney's Office to see if we could get some answers on some of the few things. And just to kind of summarize, you know, I just wanted to make sure for this, mainly so the schools know. The first question was basically asking, can we withhold money from one year, from a previous year's, from that year's taxes? And the question and the answer, after he talked with Cindy Bird's office, was yes. And that, I'd already been asked that question by one of the superintendents, so I just wanted that answer for them, so they understood that. The other question was if that answer was yes, that we could withhold, kind of what, where are we at on that deal? And pretty much, there's two things. And to summarize those two things was just withhold the money, and that's it? Or all parties need to get together and come to some sort of agreement? And I went Thursday, and I talked to Kale down at Timberlake, because they had three schools that were mainly affected. All the other schools, I've gotta get with Valerie to find out where we're at on what we withheld from them.
Their amounts are far less than
Okay, that's what I needed to find out, how the other schools are affected, so we could contact them, see if they would be a part of a meeting or what on those two. And there's other entities involved as well. And so that part of it's where we're at with that. But it kind of just, we're in a spot where, and I talked to Bryce, and I talked to Brent up at Burlington, everybody pretty well agrees, we just need to have a sit-down with, and I know that they're based out of Texas, that probably have to do a Zoom deal or something like that with them, but just have a sit-down, see if we can come to some type of solution that everybody can agree upon. You know, the worst-case scenario was they say, no, we're not doing anything, and we just gotta withhold the money. And that's where we don't want to be, if we need to sit down and have an agreement of some sort.
You could even get all the superintendents and everybody around the table and do a speakerphone.
Yeah.
Just to chat with the lawyer.
Just something. Bryce said that since he's central located, if everybody wanted to come here from around the area that wanted to come, he would host it at Jerky Schools.
Because it is my understanding, but maybe I am incorrect, that any payment plan would have to be presented as an amended, agreed journal entry signed off by the courts. Will Brian draft that?
I haven't talked to him about that yet. I just wanted to see where everybody, what everybody was thinking before we proceeded.
It is my understanding from talking to you and Nate the other day that at this point, Timberlake is leaning towards they would like to just take care of it. However, the two largest schools are leaning towards not. I would like to see a proposal to where schools can either opt into a payment, or they could just take care of it that year, and let each school decide for themselves what tax burden
A lot of the schools, it's not a huge chunk of money, and so they would probably be okay, just
Right, but informing them
And there's a couple, yes, but we need to let them know where we're at on the whole situation, regardless. Yeah, yeah. Everybody that's on there, we just need to contact. But that's kind of where we're at there. So I guess, I don't know, we just want to proceed with trying to put together some type of meeting, let all the other schools and everybody that's affected by this know what's going on.
Eighty-five percent of it goes to the schools. I think they should have the majority say, well, we do.
Nate, you're the chairman of the board, and I think we need to have fewer people, fewer individual conversations going on. And I really think every conversation should go through you, or you should at least be aware that it's going on, as opposed to different mini-conversations going on.
Yeah.
What do you, what
What do you mean by that?
Yeah. I don't understand what you're meaning.
Well
Did all five
There's obviously a little confusion with Burlington as to what their amount is, according to the newspaper article that was printed, so I don't know where he got confused.
I haven't talked to the newspaper, so I don't know.
Brent Rousey, his school district, what was reported to his school board is not an amount that is off by $15,000, which I just think we need to have, be all on the same page. And if we're gonna have discussions, they need to be agreed on what we're talking about, especially if it's coming to an amount. And I don't know how he got confused, and I'm not, I'm just saying
I mean, I guess we're just kind of at that point where we're just needing to
We need to run all the conversations with one person.
You just call a special meeting, and have a special meeting, or you just deal with just the chairman?
Only one can be there, unless you have a special meeting.
Unless we have a special meeting. I'm open either way. It's all gonna come out the same in the end, so
Something was mentioned to me earlier, and again, I'm totally out of the loop, but I'm just saying, if you guys are wanting to pay the schools back or whatever for February, something needs to happen pretty fast, because she's gonna be giving those to us pretty quick.
It doesn't have to be February.
That's the last conversation I had with you, was to pay it back in February, so I'm just throwing that out there. You know, if somebody has talked to the schools about being paid back in February
No, nobody, that I know of, nobody's talked to the schools
I have talked to the schools, other than I asked them what they meant by the letter, and they literally said they want their money back, and they want to pay it back to Sandridge in five years.
I think as long as the money doesn't leave the courthouse, we still have options to talk. The 2020 check?
2020? No, the 2021 is not, but
No, but has the 2020 check been settled now?
The 2020 will go out today, yes.
So we're gonna start on our 2021?
We have that money. It's right there. All we have to do is send it back.
Because they filed the 990s.
Do we have anything else?
Yeah, it's just a meeting. We have to
I think with that, with Sandridge getting their 2020 money back, it's over $500,000, so I think they're gonna be okay for a little bit, and stay off of us and not, you know what I mean? So I think that's a lot
Be a little bit more leaning on
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Thank you.
The hall is available, but I'm gonna run everything through Nate going forward.
Yeah, we'll be fine. All right, next thing, which is payroll warrants. Still working on it. Oh, okay. You can prove. I'll sign them, but I haven't got them done. I'll sign them after me. Okay? I'll make a
Which one you take?
This one, or the second?
E and O warrants for payment?
Actually, that's just on the back ears.
Okay, we're on it, will you?
Yeah, they're on the back ears. Sorry, my big flat graph. Do you have your sign in and hold your money?
What's that?
I don't know.
No.
Well, we're gonna have to sign it if you're not on the page today. Cindy may not have it in there. I don't know. That's canceled, so we don't have it. You're good. There's the letter from the school.
Do I have this?
Y'all need stamps.
One of them, another one.
Yeah.
There's some big stupid rules about you gotta keep it locked up, hide it, keep it gone with it.
I think it's an email on Northwest, Northwest Ohio. Want to get a membership? Do you know anything about that? I don't know.
You can put that on.
They sent it to us. That would be kind of some of the.
Thirty.
Martin stuff, so it's like a hundred dollar membership. I know that. To me, reminding us that we need to pay it and I'm like, oh, I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's just a, you know, standing.
Say now, Diesel, been able to get that tape ready though?
Almost. I was kind of scared to get to the very bottom of it. It could have been there for about a year.
That's a good thing about Diesel.
Yeah.
What are you going to do with it?
I don't know. I thought of it. They hope up there we're at, but then. Not much to pay to talk to unless I'm worried about it.
If you ever say you don't want it, I'd use it. You always need the extra.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of my dilemma there. I need a little bit extra.
The motion for such a number?
Blanket, cut your sword.
Blankets from Walter Rescue District One and District Two. And I don't need to be signed on.
Motion to accept the.
Second.
Go across from him. Make a motion to accept the. All right.
Aye, ma'am.
Number one, we're bigs for District Three.
Hey, there's one that's not marked as a bid, so I assume, that's your assumption on mine, that it's District One. So there's two for District One and one for District Three. I just, another check that I didn't want to send it for. I see some. Tell Lacey never mind.
Tell Lacey that we're lying.
Thank you.
I don't understand. District one.
Oh, so he sent, I think.
Cause ones, that's the same exact.
Well, he sent one with the.
Four-cylinder?
Yes, one with a V8. I just wasn't sure. I think this is that. Yeah, this is that.
Four-cylinder.
Yeah.
Aren't these supposed to be stamped? Yep, this one is.
This one isn't.
They missed this one too.
So Seth Lawley's not notarized?
No.
On Croft, the only one's notarized, the four-cylinder. You can reset it to bid.
No, that's. Good thing.
Croft, which one is not?
The one with the V8 is not notarized. It's forty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. The one with the four-cylinder is forty thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. It is notarized. Forty thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
Can I see that?
Yes, sir.
And it's the four-cylinder?
It is the four-cylinder. Maybe Seth's got them missing that one. I will tell you one little thing I've found about four cylinders. They don't like the cold weather. The heater don't get real hot in them. Well, I mean, your motor's only thirty-nine. It don't build enough heat to warm it up. In a weather like we had yesterday. Now, it's fine running down the road, down the highway, but it had had you like.
You can do whatever. I'm just choosing to accept yours or table it when you think about it.
And there's one thing on there. I just need to check off all your different packages and you have to figure it. What's each bed?
Yep, yep. So you want to, you want to table it? Table it, puts it on next week's agenda. You take no action on it, you can tell me when to put it back on there.
Yeah, I say no action on.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll say it.
All right.
Aye.
We need to make note on yours, whoever's making that motion or whatever you're doing, that you're not accepting Seth Lawley's and not accepting Croft's V8 since they're not notarized.
Correct. I'm going to accept this one.
You want to accept the four-cylinder?
Yes.
And not accept the other two. Then award it to the four-cylinder and not accept others.
Correct.
I need a second.
I'll say it. All right.
Okay.
Needs to be in this package.
Do you know the motion? Uni for his personal service agreement?
This is, this has one spot for one signature on here. So. Go to wherever we want.
But just twenty, District Thirty, I don't.
Make a motion.
What's that?
All right.
Aye.
Transfer from Assessor Capital Outlet, eighteen hundred dollars, Assessor, no, one thousand dollars to Assessor Personal Services.
This is all on one. Transfer, she's just taken three thousand nine forty thirty-three out of her capital outlet. She's taken ten thousand six oh six twenty-six out of her maintenance and operation to go into her personal services for the raises of a salary.
Official.
He what? What?
Yeah, it's over twenty-five hundred. I don't know, I'm going to put the back of it. Let's see, she just hit that back screen. She may just have a copy of something else.
Here's nothing. Just on the very back.
Oh, that's her account balances. I'm sorry. Fifteen hundred and a thousand. So sorry, I read her account balances. Got fifteen hundred and a thousand from, fifteen hundred from capital outlet, a thousand from Eminem going into personal services, twenty-five hundred. I read her balances.
Make a motion to accept the transfer. I'll say it. All right.
Aye.
Now we have four private property access units, District Two and District Three.
District Three has two copies of each one of theirs. Two has one copy.
Yeah, second.
Second copy.
Make a motion to accept the private property. All right. Okay, we have request change, receiving officer, remove line two for Patrick, not employed. And Ashley Ralph for Assessor's office for Alhambra County. Okay, I don't have regret change, receiving officer, remove line for Patrick, not employed in Ashley Ralph for Assessor's office for Alphatah County. Thank you, motion to accept it.
I'll say it.
All right.
Aye.
Declarational cert for District Three, I will change.
Declaration, I need to just sign right there, maybe.
Thank you, motion. One second. All right. Resolution disposal, same. Motion for resolution.
Second.
All right.
Any unforeseen business?
Thank you, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
Aye.